Okay, Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee, we're back in session. Council Bill 23-0381, ordinance of estimates for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024. I'm Eric Costello, councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. I'm joined to my far right by Councilwoman Dani McCray, Second District, Member of the Committee. To my immediate right is Marguerite Curran, Staff to the Committee. We also have staff members from Mayor Brandon Scott's office, as well as Council President Nick Mosby's office. Today, we're here to start off with Baltimore Development Corporation. Colin, if you could introduce your team and then take it away.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Members of the Committee. My name is Colin Tarbert. I'm the President and CEO of the Baltimore Development Corporation. I'm joined by three staff members today. Our CFO, Jeff Pillis, our Controller, Chevelle Dixon, and Kim Clark, our Executive Vice President. Would you like me to begin? Said there was a slight delay, but I don't know if someone can click for me. This clicker does not. Oh, this. I hit this forward button?
What technology challenge is Baltimore about?
Okay. All good. I'll just go ahead for sake of time and begin, and then as the slides can catch up. So, on the second slide, Agency Mission. The Baltimore Development Corporation is the Economic Development Agency for the City of Baltimore. Our mission is to grow the city's economy in an inclusive manner by retaining, expanding, and attracting businesses, and promoting investment thereby increasing career opportunities for city residents. So, our mission really is to grow the city's economy, and we're doing so in an intentional and inclusive way. Some of our goals for fiscal 2024, not an exhaustive list, but a couple of the notable goals that we have is our continuation of the implementation of the Baltimore Together Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. That was approved and adopted by the city in 2021. We began work on that pre-pandemic in 2019, so we're now finishing at the end of this year will be Year Two. And our goal is to host an annual summit on Baltimore Together to report out on the activities and the progress that we're making. That is going to be scheduled for October 30, and tentatively held at the Everyman Theater, so please mark your calendars. Looking forward to that event. Second goal is to complete the distribution of $11.7 million of ARPA funds via the BASE Network, which stands for Business Assistance and Support for Equity. This is our Small Business Initiative, which combines grants along with technical assistance for small businesses throughout the city. Complete the ETC Strategic Plan, hire an Executive Director, and relaunch ETC. ETC stands for Emerging Technology Center. That's our incubator technology program for entrepreneurs, and we'll touch on that later. And then last, we'll make progress on projects, major projects, like Harbor Place, Pimlico, The Compass, and others. And just wanted to note, some of the major projects that we've completed in fiscal 2023 included Lexington Market, Topgolf, and the CFG Bank Arena. There we go. So, I'll be covering three services under the Baltimore Development Corporation today. Service 809, which is the Retention, Expansion, and Attraction of Businesses. Service 810, which focuses on real estate development. Service 813, which is entrepreneurial development. I'll begin with the Retention, Expansion, and Attraction of Businesses, Service 809. This service is to focus on increasing jobs in key Baltimore growth sectors, expanding companies located in Baltimore, investing in Baltimore, and providing financial benefit to Baltimore residents and the state of Maryland, as well as fostering opportunities for MBE/WBE participation. So, the two performance metrics that you have before you. The first is the number of jobs created or retained in Baltimore City. This one is obviously very important to us and one that we track carefully. Our target for FY '24 remains the same at about 2,000 businesses. And if you look at our actual through, from FY '19 through 2022, you'll see that it hovers somewhere between 17 and 2,400 or 2,300 jobs. So, our target remains the same and has generally been consistent in the last couple of fiscal years. The second performance measure is companies that BDC assisted in staying, and I'll add and/or growing in Baltimore City. And here, our target is 150 businesses that we aim to assist. And again, you can see our actuals year over year, which is generally consistent with that 150 target, with the exception of FY '21, which is much lower, but that was during the pandemic, so we kind of shifted our resources to do more response directly to businesses that were affected by the pandemic, as opposed to necessarily, you know, growing in the city during that time period. The next service is 810. This focuses on real estate development. This service promotes real estate development, including strategic planning, development assistance, expediting building permits and other approvals, negotiating the sale or lease of city-owned properties, and managing urban renewal areas and business parks. And BDC remains the kind of point of contact for investors and/or businesses interested in major real estate development projects focused on commercial development. The two performance measures we have for this service is the dollar value of private investment per dollar of public investment. Our target for FY '24 is eight dollars of public or private investment for every dollar of public investment. And you can see there, those numbers are actually fairly, they vary over each year. And just to kind of give you a general sense, I think we look for the 1 to 10 ratio in terms of investment. You'll see some very large numbers in FY '19 and '21. Those are driven mainly by larger projects like Port Covington and Harbor Point, but the bulk of the work that we're doing is really investing in neighborhoods and small businesses, and so the leverage is more around that 1 to 10 with a target of 1 to 8 in FY '24, just given the economic uncertainty. The second measure is the number of commercial facades completed in our commercial districts. And there, we have a target of 50, which is generally consistently ranges between, you know, 30 and 50 on an annual basis. And then our last service number is 813. This is entrepreneurial development. This service includes two programs. One is Made in Baltimore, and the second is Emerging Technology Center, which is ETC. This service provides support to entrepreneurs and small businesses, including technical assistance and resources to Baltimore entrepreneurs launching successful businesses focused on sort of two general growth sectors, one being technology and the other being manufacturing. And we have two performance measures for this service, which is, the first of which is number of jobs created by all current companies, and so our target is 300. And you'll see that's fairly consistent between 2 and 300 year over year. And then our second measure is the percentage of total graduates still in business, and our target is 80%, which is fairly high, given, you know, successful businesses. But you can see there, we've been successful in having between 70 and 100% over the year, so that gets to the 80% target for keeping these businesses operational. And with that, that concludes the overview of the three services, and I'd be happy to take any questions from the Committee.
Thank you. We've been joined by Council President Nick Mosby, Councilman Chris Burnett, Eighth District, Member of the Committee; Councilman Ryan Dorsey, Third District, Member of the Committee; Councilman Mark Conway, Fourth District, as well as Deputy Mayor Justin Williams. I see Executive Vice President Clark strategically stationed at a seat without a microphone. Colin, I want to thank you and the team at BDC for the excellent service that you all continue to provide on a daily basis throughout the city to support our small businesses. One of the things that I've mentioned to the Council President in the past, the Facade Improvement Grant is something that is wildly popular, and I think that the City Council needs to find a way to help support an increase in that, just because of the demand. I know that you hear from council members across the city, there's a strong desire for those grants. I know they run out pretty quickly. You guys do a great job of administering them. I don't have any questions, but again, just want to thank you and your team for the great job you guys do every day. Mr. President, and we've also been joined by Councilwoman Odette Ramos from the 14th District. Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning. I was excited to learn recently about efforts in Pig Town and Greettown to do, I forget exactly what it's called, like neighborhood asset assessments that BDC has led. I don't think the reports are out yet, but it's a pretty exciting endeavor. If you want to talk about it, feel free to talk about it. I think it's great. Maybe you did, I came in a few minutes late. But I'm, I think that this is a really valuable way of assessing what commercial corridors and neighborhood Main Street kind of communities have to offer and what they're lacking. And I, of course, want to see this done in my district, and I'm already kind of endeavoring to do it on my own, but I'm, I don't know all the ins and outs of, you know, what makes it good. I want to know if BDC has the capacity to undertake more of this, or what it would take to give BDC the capacity to undertake this at a grander scale. I mean, I know that the Greettown and Pig Town areas are fairly limited in size and scope. To do something like this for a whole commercial corridor, like the three miles of Harford Road from like Carrington Park up to Baltimore County is a much different kind of scale.
Thank you, Councilman, for the question. We have a great team at BDC, and we have some great resources in terms of the GIS mapping and other business databases. So, if we haven't already, we can fairly quickly create like a base map of what exists in terms of commercial corridors. I think the work that we're doing is a little bit more granular in terms of actually then doing what we might call like a windshield survey, where we actually go out and walk the commercial corridor with partners and make sure that the data that we have from various sources is accurate. That's what takes a little bit more time. And then on top of that, then we're sort of partnering with the communities to figure out, okay, what are the strategies, primarily around commercial vacancies. The Facade Improvement Program is one of our key programs that we have for leveraging investment. And then we've also been partnering with the State Department of Housing and Community Development in their Restore Program, as well as Project, the Burney Program, to do fit out. So like oftentimes, while we do the exterior of the buildings for businesses, the interior and the tenant improvements is a significant amount of money. And so, we've been able to leverage the state programs to fill that. So, we could certainly get started if you have specific, you know, if you want us to look at Harford Road and create like a base map, and then we'd have to kind of plan from there on out, like what we can handle with, you know.
That's my question, is what will it take to be able to do that level of granular analysis that's beyond the windshield kind of analysis, the base map analysis? Like, what would it take to be able to do that granular level at a significantly larger scale than what you have now?
We could get back to you on that. I mean, it's basically, it's staff time, and it's also, the other key for us is having that community partner. So whether it's a Main Street or somebody else that's kind of helping us with the implementation of the strategy. But we could get back to you in terms of what it might take to, you know, I got to get back in terms of what we're currently doing, and then when that work concludes, and then when we could take on additional commercial corridors or potentially add resources. But I can tell you that the, one of our challenges is the hiring piece of it. So even if we have, we have like one or two positions open, although we've got the East Team fully staffed at this point, it's still hard to recruit, even if we have the resources, it's actually finding that person that can, you know, take on the project. But we could get back to you in terms of what we think the time is to do like the in-depth analysis for each commercial corridor, and then when we could start on, you know, a particular corridor or other corridors.
Yeah, I think for information requests, I'd really like to have some sense of, if you could give me a cost per length of roadway kind of assessment, something like that.
It, I mean, for the analysis piece, it's more just a time of having staff be able to pull the data, create the base map, do the windshield survey, and then come back and work with the community on specific, you know, areas of interest. So, it's less of a cost issue, it's more of a time issue, a staff resource issue. And then in terms of implementation, I mean, that's where we would get into, okay, what are the priorities, how many?
Yeah, I'm not worried about that.
Yeah, that would be more of a capital type thing. So we could get back to you on what we think that the time would be and when we would have, you know, the availability, I guess, to go out and take on additional commercial corridors.
Great, yeah, I'd like to get a sense of the cost of that time.
Okay.
The other thing, and I appreciate the Chair coming to me first, I do have to leave here in just a few minutes for a couple of things, is capacity for kind of policy analysis. It's often hard as a City Council member to get an agency to do a deep dive of policy analysis, unless I put in a bill, and then that triggers like a whole storm of like, you know, responses and things like that. I'd like to know more on the front end before I go there. Plenty of agencies, I think, would appreciate, and don't put in this bill without having talked to us. I have a few different things that I feel like BDC could help with. You know, the city has varying density in different neighborhoods, in different communities, and along different commercial corridors, we have different kind of circumstance. I, you know, I'd love to know how deeply BDC could endeavor into like, what potential that we have if we increase density in targeted areas, or, you know, blanket kind of overall in the city, what kind of financial gains we can have, what kind of community development gains can come as a direct, you know, as a secondary kind of result of just allowing for density to be allowed, you know, to exist where it doesn't. Other policy things that have more also to do with direct impacts on real estate. One conversation I've been involved in is about, you know, the building code and how many stories of interior staircases can be allowed with a single staircase in a building, as opposed to multiple staircases being required and things like this. I've certainly traveled to plenty of other places where, you know, fifth floor walk-up is like a pretty common phrase in any city that was built before 1900, and yet, we have very few fifth floor walk-ups in Baltimore, and they're perfectly safe elsewhere, and it's prohibited by the building code, you know, under modern standards. So, you know, the impacts for potential for real estate development gains by changing things like that to allow for things that we prohibit. And then other things similar like, what would it, you know, how might it benefit developers and therefore, community development to modify things like our stormwater requirements, not just for quantitative but qualitative, because these qualitative things tend to eat up land space on a site that is otherwise developable but has to be given over to this? And if there's ways that we can offset this specific location of that stormwater, how could that benefit real estate development? And again, overall, community development and tax yield for the city? You know, I'd love to be able to ask BDC for analysis and support on these things without having to put in a bill. Is this something that I can come to BDC for? And who, how, you know, can we do this?
Yeah, you could certainly come to me with the request of, you know, if there's a piece of analysis that you think BDC can do, we would be able to quickly tell you if we can do it, or whether or not we think there's a better resource for it. Some of the topics that you're talking about, I mean, obviously, we're very interested in density and development and maximizing the tax base. We've done some studies on population growth and what the economic impact of that would be, like, you know, what's the economic impact of adding a resident? And we partnered with Live Baltimore in particular on that study. Some of the other pieces that you're talking about, we would probably want to form like a working group, and maybe that's something that you, instead of a bill, you could ask for like a working group to come together, if it's stormwater or building code. We could certainly weigh in on what we would like to see, but I would imagine that the other agencies would also want to weigh in on that. We could do it, you know, whether it's an official task force or just a working group to try to get some direction on what the issues are, what recommendations could be. But certainly happy to, you know, work with you on answering any policy questions that we can delve into.
Great. And the last thing is, back to my first thing for a second. If there is, could BDC put together any short of, sort of like, one pager on like, what exactly gets looked at in that granular analysis of the community assessment survey? I would love for us to be able to share widely what exactly it is we're looking for to understand at a deep level, what the street and the frontage of buildings and things like that, what we're looking for. So, because I would like to be able to do that granular analysis, like, I would be happy to be the community partner for the area that I represent, you know, along with Main Streets, and I'm happy to allocate my staff time to doing that kind of on-the-ground, footwalking, granular analysis. But I, we don't know what to look for to make sure that we're doing it at the level that BDC would want for itself.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. We could do something of like a toolkit for a commercial corridor, you know, evaluation, and then we could have, you know, once we complete one of our evaluations, to show that as like the example. And maybe that could help other communities sort of take on some of this work, and then we could provide, you know, guidance where we can, or even some of the base information that's fairly accessible for us.
When do you expect for the first of those?
I'd have to go back and check. I don't know, to be honest with you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Colin.
Thank you, Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hello. I had a quick question about the public market strategy. What is the public market strategy from BDC and how we can leverage all of our public markets in the city to address the food insecurity options that we're seeing all across the city?
And Colin, just for background, I asked Councilwoman Porter to bring this up to you, not in your capacity as President of BDC, but in one of the many other hats you wear as Chair of the Public Markets Corp.
Sure. I don't wear that hat anymore. I actually stepped down as Public Markets Chair in March, although obviously, that was recently, so I think I can maybe give you some direction, although not necessarily answer completely. So, I was involved with the public markets for a number of years in my mayor's office capacity, and then kind of continued that over at BDC. So, I think you should meet with Paul Rupert, who's the current President and CEO of the Public Markets. BDC has provided funding through the city's capital budget, is kind of a pass-through to the markets. And in my time at the markets, and now with Paul at the helm, we've invested, and this dates back to the Rawlings Blake Administration, about $65 to $70 million. A large chunk of that is Lexington Market, which was roughly 45, but Northeast Market, Broadway Market, Hollands Market, and Avenue Market are all receiving funds or have received funds. Hollands and Avenue continue, they're kind of in the process, as you know, it's being renovated at Hollands, and then the next will be Avenue Market. So, I think there's sort of individual strategies, I think, for each market, because they're so unique and each neighborhood's so unique. But they're huge assets, they were in disrepair for many years, we've capitalized them, and now I think the focus is more on the operational side and how to like really engage community and using the public markets and bringing in vendors and filling vacant stalls. I can't talk to those specific strategies, because Paul and his team are really on the ground implementing that, but that kind of gives you a sense of the history and how we've invested in those, and I mean.
Yeah, and so, that was one of the reasons why I asked specifically you the question. One, where we are in that process, so I'm glad to know that it's moving along with Hollands Market. I've been kind of watching it from afar from my district, but I wanted to know, what is the strategy of like getting those vendors filled, how we can leverage kind of food vendors, other vendors that are in that South Baltimore community, micro businesses that can use those stalls in order to kind of spur economic activity? I mean, in South Baltimore, we've talked about this, you know, we don't have many of the commercial corridors that we do see in the downtown area. Now that we have Port Covington, I think that that may kind of spur economic activity down there, but I want to make sure that we have some sort of way for those micro businesses to kind of engage in the marketplace as well.
Yeah, I mean, you should definitely meet with Paul on that piece. I think, I mean, the markets for 200-plus years have been like great incubators of businesses, and so, BDC still provides some of the technical assistance to those. We've partnered with a lot of people in Lexington Market to get new businesses and make sure they had the capital to get started. But yeah, there's some other partners involved in helping with Hollands as well, in terms of some grants and other things to help get the fresh food in particular, which is always a challenge, because they're just difficult businesses to operate profitably. But I know a lot of the improvements that are going on right now at Hollands will hopefully make it easier for businesses to start up. One of the challenges that we've had with the markets is the upfront capital cost. And so, hopefully, some of the dollars, and I can't speak to it, because Paul's closer to the design, is making sure that the tenant improvements that the business has to do are hopefully, you know, easier to accomplish than, you know, fitting out an entire stall. And so, hopefully, the work that's being done now, which is mostly interior work, we did a lot of the exterior work and just building infrastructure with the first phase of it. Now they're going in and kind of finishing the stall work. Hopefully, they can put a lot of the plumbing, electrical, mechanical, the things that cost a lot of money, and then, you know, have the vendor kind of fit out more of the, you know, equipment and cosmetic aspect of it to keep the rent low enough that they can operate and make, you know, a profit. And we were successful in doing that at Lexington Market. That was like a big piece of it, was to try to do as much of the build-out upfront as possible, and then build that back through rent, but also make the rent reasonable enough that a small business could afford it.
Okay. And then my second question, it's funny that you mentioned incentives related to food markets. What is BDC doing to enhance incentives for grocery stores to come into the City of Baltimore?
So, we currently have the grocery store tax, which helps both retain and attract grocery stores to, I think it's high-food priority areas now. And so, that's a 10-year abatement on personal and real property taxes. And then, we do have the opportunity on a case-by-case basis to try to work directly with a landlord and a tenant to see if there's something that we might be able to do. We, our funding was cut a few years ago, unfortunately, for our food policy, kind of, not food policy, but our food attraction person, so we rely a little bit more on the Planning Department on the policy side. But we would treat, you know, the grocery stores like any other business assistants, but knowing that those are like really key to sustaining neighborhoods.
Yeah, the only reason why I'm asking that is because we had a recent closure with our price rate in Southwest Baltimore, and currently, we have no grocery store outside of the market fresh that's coming a few months from now. And I'm wondering if there needs to be more dedication to those types of incentive packages from BDC leveraging state funds, private dollars, foundation dollars, so that most, so that we can get grocery stores within our neighborhood. Currently, you know, within South Baltimore, we have no grocery store. And so, that's something that I think needs to be addressed pretty quickly, so that we can kind of spur that economic activity. I know the profits are razor-thin, I do realize that, but, you know, I'm really gonna start pressing BDC to kind of really think creatively how we can get those incentive dollars in, because it's becoming, you know, really a situation where there's nothing in our communities, so.
Yeah, it's a challenge in your district, it's a challenge in a number of districts. I think, honestly, the focus probably needs to be on retention initially, because it's hard to attract a grocer, because the margins are thin and the capital costs are high. But where we do have grocery stores, we want to try to keep them, we were very, you know, we're still very much involved in the price rate situation. It always takes longer than we would want it to, in terms of backfilling that space. That particular property's a challenge, just the way it's oriented, it's very inward and other issues, but it's certainly something that we have paid attention to for a long time and want to continue to partner with you and the communities to make sure that we retain our grocery stores. And then maybe where new development is happening, we're able to attract those, but that's even much more difficult, but we can't lose the ones that we have, for sure.
Yeah, and I think that it's so important, because right now, they're in need of $2 to $3 million upfront investment. Like, I was hoping that there would be some sort of incentive package that would help with that, that BDC can kind of grow leveraging state funds, but it seems to be my office and the consultant kind of working to gather those funds, and I think. those funds. And I think that that needs to be impressed upon BDC and the staff to kind of generate those funds, not my office and the consultant. So, thank you.
Thank you. We've also been joined by Councilman Stokes. We're gonna go to Councilwoman Ramos, then Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning. Apologies for my being a little late. I had a question about the FIG grant. You may have mentioned it earlier, and I apologize. It was recently changed from a grant to reimbursable. Well, I just have to say that none of my businesses on Greenmount Avenue can use it, because they don't have the upfront costs. So how can we make sure that our businesses that really need the FIG grant can actually use it, even though it's, can we do a sort of upfront little bid? And then how do we make that work?
It's always been reimbursable. We actually changed it in the last couple months to do exactly what you're saying, within certain geographical areas, which Greenmount Avenue would be in one of those areas. We're following the Neighborhood Impact Investment Fund areas. So we are providing, I believe, and...
Depends on what part of Greenmount Avenue.
What's that?
It depends on what part of Greenmount Avenue. My part of Greenmount Avenue isn't in an impact investment area.
Okay. Well, we can look at the specifics. We did change it for areas in need of investment, like within the NIF footprint, to be a portion of it upfront, based on costs, and then the rest reimbursable, I believe. Kim can correct me if, but I think that's what we do, because we saw that challenge with small businesses not having the upfront capital cost. So we can delve into it and look at the specific areas. But we did change it to do what you're recommending.
Yeah. My part of Greenmount Avenue is NIF-adjacent. It's not...
Okay. We can work with you.
I appreciate that, because that would be great. Okay, thank you. We'll follow up with you on that. I appreciate it. And then my second question is, I'm interested in Service 80, let me just see, 809, on page 282 in the book, net number of new and expanding businesses in commercial corridors? What commercial corridors are you actually looking at there? All of our, like, Main Street areas, just downtown? What are we looking at here?
Those are the RBDL districts, which some of them overlap with Main Streets, some of them don't, but...
Oh, those are RBDLs? Okay. I think we had this conversation about RBDLs at the beginning of the term. So, okay, so that's what that is. Because I was just curious how you were measuring that. Because I actually have a lot of businesses that want to come into Greenmount Avenue. We're hindered by a few obstacles, which we've talked about before. And so this number could be so much higher, if it was, you know, including all of our, you know, commercial corridors and Main Streets. And I think that that would be something to consider, considering that, you know, people do want to open businesses here, and they want to open businesses all over the city. So I would ask that you consider that, consider that as well.
Yeah. I think we're just measuring it, because we can get that specific data is probably why we're using the RBDL.
Yeah. I think we had a conversation early in the term about including all of these commercial areas, expanding RBDLs to all the commercial areas. We just haven't been able to pursue it after that. So, Mr. Chair, I have one more question, but I can wait until the next round.
Yep. Councilman Stokes, and then Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Colin, and your hard-working group over there. I want to mention that the boost program that you use downtown, are you part of that? Okay. Are you gonna do some incentive in terms, I think I mentioned this before, about some of the businesses that are on 25th Street, right off between Maryland Avenue. There's a lot of black-owned business there. And I had mentioned this to Mr. Al Hutchison during the CIWA. We do this extra outreach for the businesses. But then when the CIWA is gone, it's no outreach in terms of finding out what kind of technical assistance that some of these businesses have. Have y'all, I think I mentioned it before, I would like for somebody from your office to go up there and just talk to them, talk about what kind of assistance you have for them. Because it always happened during the CIWA. And after CIWA, everything just, everybody go back and go back into their comfort zone. My second question is, were you part of the, I'm smiling, because the 12th District getting ready to get a full-service market on Orleans and Central Avenue. And I know how long since I've been on the council, I've been trying to get a market there. And I can smile and say that. But my question is, were you a part of this Perkins/Somerset bringing that market to the 12th District? And the reason why I ask is because EDBI keeps talking about they need density. And I just don't believe they need density, because if you look at Somerset, Perkins, Old Town, there's not a whole lot of people there. So how is it one organization say, we need density to get a market? We got a market coming with less people. So sometimes when you do market studies, they always say, oh, you gotta get some more people. It's not the right income. But when you got foot traffic and driving traffic, and I know for a fact, people in East Baltimore in the 12th District want to eat, they want a full-service market. So I never believe market studies, because this is a good example of what a market study said. But guess what? We now have a full-service market coming to East Baltimore. So my question is, how do you, how do you use a market study to determine whether a community that never had a market in 20 years still can get a market? I don't understand what kind of questions do you use in terms of using a market study to say, well, they can have a market? They homeowners, they renters, it's senior builders, it's development. I know for a fact, talking to people in the community, they want a market. And they are happy right now. But I don't understand how the market study can say no, and we can get one now.
I'll take the, I'm sure there's a question there, but let me take the first one. We do outreach year-round, so we're happy to go up to 25th Street and meet with the businesses and tell them what resources we have available, and what other resources might be available to them as well. So happy to do that. On the grocery store question, I mean, it's, retailers are difficult to nail down. Sometimes they pick sites, and we scratch our heads. Other times, we're saying, this is the best site for you. And they say, oh, no, that's not going to work for us. So it's a little bit confusing. We, BDC, you know, well before my time, have been involved in attracting a grocery store to the Old Town area for decade-plus now. We were involved with the developer and the retailer, who I don't think they've been named yet to hopefully open up a full-service grocery store there. I would agree with you. I think a lot of it's location access. So I think having Orleans is a major thoroughfare, and being sandwiched between Hopkins and downtown, it's a location issue. I think they also looked at the Ketchman area. We had found years ago that folks don't shop at their closest grocery store. Everyone thinks that they shop at their neighborhood grocery store. But we've found that people really travel to like where they want to shop. And so I think having variety in East Baltimore, they'll also be able to capture a lot of the downtown Mount Vernon District, which, you know, people might not think of as being close to Perkins, Old Town, but it really is. I mean, it's just over the bridge. And so I think those elements helped attract that grocer. And then the piece of it is, there might not be a lot of people living now, but I think there's about like 2,000 units coming in as part of that whole project over the next, whatever it is, six-to-10-year timeframe period. So it's great. It's been a long time coming, and we're excited for you and the district to have the full-service grocery store.
My last question is the Oliver Community. I don't know if you remember when Stop Shop and Save was on Harfitt near Bonaparte, where the owner is Mr. Usain. He is now developing that building. I'd like to sit down and talk, have y'all talk with him about bringing a full-service market to there, because he willing to do that. And if you ride past there, you can see he done put a new roof on it. I mean, he have all that access to parking. So I would like to reach out to your office with Mr. Usain and see how we can actually bring a full-service market to there also.
Yeah. We'd be happy to talk with him and make sure he's aware of the programs that we have, you know, available.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Colin, and your team for the work you guys do. I really appreciate you. Couple of questions. I just sort of noted, noticed in flipping through the budget, that BDC and Live Baltimore both have had stagnant budgets. And noting how important your work is to economic development in the city, and executing that vision for the city, I was curious why that is, and if additional capacity would allow us to accomplish more? And I don't know if that is something that affects your ability to get more done.
You said static, right?
It's been static.
Yeah.
For all the services that you mentioned, it's static, consistent budget. I see Laura coming up.
I just want to make one clarifying comment on that. For both BDC and Live Baltimore, we do make an inflationary adjustment to their budget every year. So it's not a flat funding level. We use the inflationary increases that we use across the budget for our current level of service calculations. So for the, knowing that inflation has been a pressure for these organizations, you know, just like many organizations, the increase this year was about 4% for each of the services in BDC. Also, just want to note that, you know, these entities have the opportunity to participate in the enhancement process. That's part of the budget process. They also have the opportunity to tap into other resources, like the Innovation Fund and stuff like that. Traditionally, Live Baltimore, BDC, when they've participated in that process, have seen levels of success.
Yeah. I appreciate that. And I think that is important. I also want to keep in mind, just, we know we have a number of issues, grocery stores, getting more people to move into the city, keeping and bringing more businesses into the city. And a lot of that is sort of between you guys and Live Baltimore, and attracting and keeping people and businesses here, noting that those are probably some of the biggest problems when we talk about our tax base and our ability to attract and keep residents here. So, you know, I, maybe you don't have to have an answer for this now, but when we think about, you know, our big goal here, our big goal is to bring more people to Baltimore, noting that that allows us to bring in more tax revenue, which allows us to better handle city services, and so on, so forth. So, yeah. If there's something you want to add to that more than?
No. I think the reality of it is, the issues that we're trying to address are not necessarily budget issues.
Okay.
You know, additional funding, I think that, you know, we've been consistent. And I mean, consistency is actually very helpful for us. I think that we have been working to partner and trying to leverage funds from outside of the city. I mean, I think the city's got a ton of priorities. Sure, you know, everybody wants to be the top priority. But I think it's time that we collectively, at the city level, I think, could go out and leverage significant dollars for these with state partners, foundation partners, and others. Because I think the city can only do so much. And in some ways, you guys have a, you know, difficult task. It's kind of like, you know, robbing Peter to pay Paul. And certainly, I've been involved in this for a number of years to know that. So I think I would be more interested in sitting down and figuring out, okay, like, what are our key priorities to drive population growth and investment? What are the policy decisions that we might be able to work on to change that don't necessarily cost us anything, but could attract investment? And we've done that, you know, in different capacities over the years. And then also, you know, now, I think with a great partner in the state, or multiple partners in the state now, I think we have the opportunity to really see the investment that Baltimore hasn't seen over many decades. And that that's probably the dollar amounts that we need in terms of like a state funding type of dollar amounts than anything that we can even do within BDC or even at the city level.
I appreciate that. Thank you. My second question is actually to piggyback on something my colleague brought up regarding grocery stores. You mentioned that one of the big problems I have in my district is of course the same issue, grocery stores. When I came in office, we had zero. We just lost one. And then another grocer came in, they lasted for about a year, they left, the former grocer came back. You mentioned that one of the most important things we could do would be to try to retain grocery stores. What are some of the ways that we think about that out of BDC, and how we sort of think about that, more importantly, in this budget?
I mean, candidly, like, one of the issues that the grocery stores have, I mean, I think on that particular location, you know, it may have just been the model and the product that they were providing. I won't turn to Kim, because she shops there and lives in the neighborhood, but she could give you her personal comments off the record, in terms of...
Kim is my constituent, so she might start asking me questions.
So we're familiar with that location. I mean, one of the struggles is just the cost of operation in terms of, you know, extra security costs and those types of things. And I'm not sure there's much that we can do, other than coordination. And we do try to make sure that BPD is aware of our major tenants and grocery stores. And they've been great partners in terms of trying to address it, but they can only do so much. We have worked with the state to do some grants in terms of security at just shopping centers and that type of thing to help address that. That tends to be probably one of the more direct cost issues that we hear from grocers, that we could, you know, maybe partner on in terms of trying to address.
I appreciate that. And this would be, I guess, for an offline conversation, but I am trying to attract a second grocer to the district. And I've had a number of conversations and have stumbled in those conversations. I'd love your assistance in trying to figure out how we can do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We've been joined by Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anyone in the first round who hasn't asked a question yet? Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Director, for joining us. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I wanted to go back to the facade improvement programs. So we've had one in my district that was sort of marred in COVID and, you know, a lot of challenges along the way, once we got the funding going. So I do understand that the complexities are probably more challenging the most, given the context. But I guess typically, what are the, is it normal for these programs to take a significant amount of time? And what can we do? Because I agree with Councilman Dorsey, that this is a critical program, a helpful program. And when you look across the city, it's, it makes a difference when people see improvements along our commercial districts, our commercial corridors, and that sort of perception of the area, as they're, you know, driving along an arterial road, perhaps they want to turn in and see a little bit more about the neighborhood itself. And so it's a critical program. What capacity challenges are you seeing with that initiative? And what are some ways that you think the council and the administration can be more supportive of expanding capacity for the facade improvement program? Because I do believe it makes a difference that, in sort of the narrative and storytelling of our city, and communities that typically are not downtown and may not be as well-known, but can be surprising, surprising and have real assets in their commercial districts. But, you know, the signage may not be up to par or been dated. And so folks are a little bit more reluctant to engage in those communities without those, you know, new amenities or the new look and refresh. So what are some ways that you think we can grow and build capacity of that program?
Well, hopefully, over the next fiscal year, you'll see, you know, improvements. Like I mentioned, we revamped the program to be more user-friendly, especially in more disinvested neighborhoods or areas that need investment. So that change just happened earlier this year. We implemented it. So hopefully, we'll be able to get more businesses and clients who take advantage of the program, because we've tried to remove the barrier of the upfront and reimbursable costs, at least like, I think, the first half of it. So that's one. Two, we've just, we're just starting to come out of the effects of the pandemic, like, as an agency. So one is staffing. The West Team, who works on, you know, many of your projects, was a mighty team of two, now they're a mighty team of three, and hopefully four soon.
Thank you, Matt.
So I think you'll see some additional capacity, because we've been able to bring on new folks. And we're also now sort of, for the most part, done with our COVID relief programs that were, you know, just basically took up all the time for the last couple years. So hopefully, those changes, you know, you'll see more progress in us being able to get more grants in your district, as well as, you know, processing things faster. Oftentimes, it also relies, like, on the applicant.
Sure. I agree with that.
And some of them haven't taken on a construction project, and so they haven't hired an architect and do all those things. And so we, you know, we do our best to help them through it, but we can't do all of it. So hopefully, you see a positive change. If you don't, you know, feel free to reach out.
Yeah. This particular project was a mixed bag on all fronts. So I get it. And having one or two people try to implement something like that is also pretty challenging. Which is why I was asking about the capacity piece. Like, you know, is it more staff? And it sounds like that's happening. The other thing that comes to mind, and again, I understand it's probably a capacity piece, but for, I'm sure, implementing programs like this and... but for, I'm sure implementing programs like this in an area that already has a Main Street or some other, like, you mentioned, you know, community partners. What we find in disadvantaged communities is that those structures may not exist. And so it does put more pressure on your team to sort of do all of the lead work and a lot of the outreach and, you know, negotiations and all of that, that having a Main Street or some sort of CDC or other formal entity could probably handle or take some of the load off. Has there been conversation about building capacity in areas that have, don't have those sort of entities in place? Whether those are like how to start a CDC or how to start a business association or Business Improvement Council or whatever we want to call it? Like, a lot of, what I find is a lot of folks don't know where to start in the first place. And it's not, it's not something that you can easily Google to, you know, just like, all right, we're going to try this. People sort of naturally float to community associations, which are, obviously, it makes bad, but when we're talking about engaging with businesses, it's even more complicated. And so just thinking through like, what are some ways that we can, because what ends up happening is that the resources continue to go in areas where the easy lift is there. They're the ones that are applying for the grants, they're the ones that are overseeing the grants, they're implementing it, they're doing the outreach. And so the communities that already have resources are the ones that continue to get more resources because they know how to seek them. And communities that don't just sort of languish because there's not capacity there, there's nobody there that really knows what they're doing in this way. May not be their area expertise. And so what are some things that you think we can do differently to really build out those areas so that we're not continuing to build up already strong communities and leaving everybody else behind?
Yeah, I agree 100% with what you're saying. It's the reality. I think, you know, we try to do what we can to fill in where there are gaps. I don't think BDC, like, we, BDC haven't taken on capacity building. I don't think we necessarily could or necessarily are the best to do that. But I think maybe identifying specific communities that are in need and have, I mean, it's always trying to like, it really needs to be like a grassroots effort where you have someone that wants to step up or a community that wants to step up and then connecting them with resources. But I would think if we identified a couple of those communities or community leaders, I think that we could find the resources to do that. I've seen it done with other communities, thinking in particular of the South Baltimore area, like Goldsecker and others have come in and helped to do that capacity building. Southwest Partnership, for example, didn't exist, at least when I think I was, you know, in the mayor's office, and then it gained traction. Anchors has supported it, others. So I think it's an opportunity. If you have specific areas, I'd be happy to kind of sit down and think of ways to connect them with the right sources to build capacity because it makes our jobs a lot easier if we have someone either marketing our programs or being able to help explain our programs because, you know, at least more recently, we have been limited on staff. So we do rely on the Main Street Directors or others in the community to kind of help people through the process.
And I would say what I was thinking more is like what the Planning Department does with the Planning Academy, where they're, you know, bringing in a cohort of community leaders, helping them understand the zoning code, the planning process. And ultimately, what it does is it's just, it's a value added to that neighborhood because now if there's something in their community that they want to know how to navigate the BMZA or a Planning Commission, they better, they have a better understanding of what's happening and how to better advocate for their community. And I would say something to model like that. And maybe it's not you guys that are leading it. Maybe there's some sort of partnership that comes to fruition between multiple agencies or it's a part of the Planning Acad-- I mean, I don't want to like sign you guys up to like work with the Planning Department, but like, maybe they already, maybe it makes sense to just add to the curriculum that they're already working on or have someone from BDC come in and talk about Main Streets or facade improvements or just sort of so that, you know, because you have this like folks that are like signed up to give their time multiple weeks, multiple months to be better advocates. And I think the more we can pour into them with that sort of knowledge base, the stronger those communities will be. And I know we had a pretty good participation in the last round of the Planning Academy of folks in my district that were just like meanwhile community leaders who just needed that additional like technical assistance. And now they better understand, like, when something's coming on my block and there's a sign in the lawn that says, you know, there's a hearing, they can better mobilize either for or against because they understand what they're supposed to be saying in the first place or who they're supposed to talk to or what the process is supposed to be versus things just sort of happening to you or you don't get the resources at all because you don't even know where to start. So just something that, and we can talk offline to figure it out, but I think that there's an opportunity here to really build on that so that we don't continue inadvertently in some ways to continue to dump into communities, not dump, but like resource, already resourced areas and folks that don't really know the process, you know, just sort of get left up to the side. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I was thinking the Planning Academy. As you were talking the whole time, I was thinking the Planning Academy was like the model so we could do like, I think you're right. I think partnering with them and doing like a subset on, you know, community development, we could partner with HCD and probably some others and maybe even bring in some of those CDCs that have built capacity over the years and they can talk about how they did it. I think it's an excellent idea.
Thank you. We have a hard stop in three minutes. Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was curious about something in Service 810. Excuse me for not facing you. I'm trying to look at my book here. Total number of taxes at phase-in generated by BDC-controlled development projects. Could you expand on what exactly that means? This is on page 284 of the book.
Yeah, I think those are the formerly city-owned properties that BDC took through the disposition and development process that are now on the tax rolls.
So can you give me an example of what that is?
I mean, I'm just thinking of one off the top of my head, but like, I would assume like the Bath House redevelopment on Pigtown Main Street, for example, that was a former vacant city-owned property, which BDC issued an RFP for. We went through an LDA process, and now it's, you know, mixed-use apartment and commercial development. So I think that, I think now that that's on the tax rolls, we would, we would look at how much real property tax is being generated from that, along with any piggyback taxes, which would be like income tax for new residents, that type of thing.
Okay, gotcha. The other question that I had was whether or not it's your shop or it's finance that works on trying to get data about economic impact of the TIFs in terms of jobs created, long-term impact? Do you have that data? Does that, what, who's got that data? In terms of looking at each of our TIF projects and seeing what the actual economic impact has been?
I believe it's Treasury Management.
Excuse me. Yes, it's within Treasury Management in Finance.
So that'll be a question I'll ask you next.
Sounds great.
Great, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Colin, Kim, team, thank you all for the great work. Appreciate you coming by. We are now in recess until 10:00 AM sharp for BBMR.